And welcome to the League of Women Voters Winona Candidate Forum for Winona Area School Board. I'm Ruth Charles, your moderator and for this event. And our 2022 forum cosponsors are the Advocacy Center of Winona, AAUW Winona Branch, Engage Winona, Home and Community Options, Project Fine, Winona Occupational Rehabilitation Services, and Winona State University Department of Social Work. We are providing this forum via the Government Access Channel's HBC-19 and Spectrum Charter, Winona City Channel 987. The general public is invited to be in attendance. We thank the City of Winona for allowing us to hold this educational forum in the council chambers and the use of staff and technical assistants for this forum. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization organized at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to become educated and participate in government. While we as a league do study and take stands on issues, we do not endorse or support political parties, candidates, or tell voters how to answer referendum questions. We will read statements from candidates who are unable to attend this forum. For our home viewing audience, you may call in questions to be considered this evening by calling (507) 457-8286. A volunteer will write your question down and take it to the facilitator table. This evening, we're welcoming candidates for Winona Area Public School District. For District One, they are Ted Hazelton and Pete Watkins. District Two, Michael Hanrady, who is unopposed. And then we have our at-large candidates, and this is pick two on the ballot. There are two open seats. The candidates that'll be on the ballot will be Marilla Cunningham, Nancy Denzer, Tony Moore, and Carl Sonneman. Mr. Tony Moore was unable to attend tonight, but has provided a written withdrawal statement. And as moderator, I will read it at the time of his rotation in the opening remarks. This forum is intended to provide the voters with information so they can make an educated choice on the ballot. The views expressed in this educational forum are those from the candidates. We do encourage our members as individuals, as we encourage each of you to get involved in your community. The League of Women Voters' participation policy and ground rules were provided to the candidates with their invitation to attend. This is a live cable TV broadcast. The public was invited to submit questions for the candidates through the League of Women Voters Winona email site and on our Facebook page. Question facilitators from the League of Women Voters and our cosponsors viewed the questions, and the League of Women Voters moderator had final selection of the questions for the candidates. This forum is being taped, may not be edited, and must be broadcast in its entirety and in accord with all FCC regulations. The League of Women Voters will determine the questions to be asked, and attempts in good faith will be made to cover all areas of interest expressed in advance of the forum by the public. The candidates will not know the questions in advance. Questions that are hostile, partisan, embarrassing, inappropriate of a personal nature will not be asked. Questions on similar topics may be grouped. All questions will become the property of the League of Women Voters. Tonight, our timekeeper for this evening is Wendy Draves. Candidates will strictly observe the time limits and responses. The timekeeper will hold up cards to indicate that time is about to expire. Once the stop card is displayed, candidates will stop at the end of their current sentence. Opening statements will be two minutes, questions will be one minute, and closing statements will be one minute. So again today, our candidates with us today are: District One, we have Ted Hazelton, and we have Pete Watkins. District Two is Michael Hanrady, who is unopposed. And then our at-large, which is where you'll pick two on the ballot, Marilla Cunningham, Nancy Denzer, Tori Moore, and Carl Sonneman. The candidates have agreed to allow me to address them by their first names, and we will begin with our opening statements. So our first speaker will be Ted Hazelton for District One.
Good evening, and thank you for coming.
Turn your mic on.
Sorry.
There you go.
Okay, good evening. I'm Ted Hazelton. I'm running for District One seat on our school board, which is the extreme western part of Winona. I want to thank everybody for coming tonight and hearing us. I want to thank my fellow candidates for running so far a clean election, or clean campaign. I grew up in Minnesota City. I'm a lifelong area resident. I moved to Winona in 2001. I'm a graduate of Winona Senior High. I graduated in the class of 1986. I have three children, two of which went through the public schools, and one is a current sixth grader at the middle school. I believe in community involvement. I'm active in many civic organizations, and I believe in giving back to our community. I did serve a four-year term on our school board back in 2007 through 2010. At that time, it was a very challenging time in the district, a lot of infighting, personal agendas, and it was not a very cohesive board. Since then, it's calmed down, and the school board's doing a lot better. I would like to join the school board and continue this and improve our public schools. Again, my name is Ted Hazelton. I'm running for District One, and I hope to earn your vote.
Thank you. Next will be Pete Watkins, also for District One.
Well, good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum this evening. I'm Pete Watkins, and I'm a school board candidate in WAPS District One. Our family moved to Winona in 2011 because we saw the community as a great place to raise our family. My wife, Laura, of 25 years, is a special education teacher in the public school setting, where she works with deaf and hard-of-hearing students in Rochester Public Schools. Our oldest son, Cam, is a junior at Minnesota State Mankato, where he majors in construction management, and he also works for Dalton Cook Construction here in the summer months. Our daughter, May, is in her first year at the University of Wisconsin-O'Clare, where she's pursuing a degree in nursing. She earned her CNA degree here while a WAPS student as a senior and works at Winona Health in the summer. Both of our two oldest kids were involved with a very innovative reach program at the high school. Our youngest son, Seth, is a freshman at Winona Senior High this fall. All three of our kids went to Winona Middle School, and all three of our kids attended elementary school here in Winona. In terms of my background, I served as an NCAA college coach and instructor in sports management from 1997 to 2016. In 2016, I retired from coaching and teaching full-time to move into administration with the Minnesota State System. I worked for four years with a consortium of 20 community colleges and technical colleges in Minnesota, and then in 2020 accepted a position at Winona State where I work in athletics. In the community, I also teach part-time at St. Mary's University, coach youth baseball in Rollingstone, and umpire baseball in the summer months. At WAPS, I serve on the curriculum committee and formerly was a coach for the boys soccer program. When people ask me my philosophy and why I'm running for school board, it's actually a pretty straightforward answer from me. I believe that our teachers need the tools to teach. I believe that our students deserve the freedom to learn, and I believe that our families, our community, and our taxpayers deserve a transparent and pragmatic school district. Thank you for being here tonight and the opportunity to earn your vote.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Michael Hanrady from District Two.
Thank you. First, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters and the sponsors for this forum. My name is Mike Hanrady, and I'm running for reelection in the second district. I'm a parent of children in the district and a spouse of a WAPS teacher. I'm a National Certified Guardian and the Program Director for the Adult Advocacy Program at Catholic Charities of Southern Minnesota. Four years ago, I ran for this seat with the hope of bringing a new voice to the school board, a new voice to advocate for diversity and equity, a new voice to push for sound financial stewardship, and a new voice for staff and student needs. I believe the board has done good work in that area, and I'm proud of my voting record and the work I have done on the school board. Just recently, the board approved a strategic plan to address student achievement, student support, staff support, diversity, equity, inclusion, and communication outreach and marketing. I fully support this plan and will continue to work to advance student safety, educational equity, and additional state funding. I look forward to the opportunity to earn your vote and continue to serve the district.
Thank you. Next, one of our at-large candidates, Marilla Cunningham.
Hi, my name is Marilla Cunningham, and I want to thank the League of Women Voters for having us tonight, as well as the City of Winona. Brief background, I moved to Winona just over four years ago for a position in the school district. I was a district administrator, and I have since left the district, but I currently am a superintendent of Western Regional Adolescence Services out of La Crosse County. We serve a juvenile detention facility as well as a shelter unit for kids coming in through Child Protective Services, crisis, and other adjudications. Education-wise, I have my bachelor's in political science, have my master's in secondary ed social sciences, and my doctorate in curriculum and instruction with an emphasis in culture and teaching, which is very inclusive of the diversity, equity, and inclusion topics and issues. I grew up in New York City, but I spent every summer in Winona, Minnesota. My mother was born and raised here, and I spent my summers with my grandparents. You may be familiar with them. Probably not if you're--maybe half of the audience would be familiar with Art and Marion Cunningham. My grandfather had the Hurry Back, which was a place where you could go to play pool, to play billiards. Some people cut school there. Actually, from what I've heard, a lot of people cut school and went there, to play pinball machines, to play foosball, to play jukebox. That was in back. In front, there was a lunch counter and a breakfast counter. You could have coffee, pastries, lunch. The sense of belonging that that created, the sense of valuing people that that created, the importance that people felt about themselves when they were there made people keep going back there again and again and again. And over 30 years since it's closed, people still talk about it, and it still brings a smile to their face. That's what I would like to see with Winona Area Public Schools. 30 years from now, I want people to think about it being a place where they felt valued, included, and supported.
Thank you. Next, Nancy Denzer, who is an at-large candidate.
Thank you. My name is Nancy Denzer, and I want to thank the organizers of this event and to those of you physically present or enjoining another way. I ran for school board in 2018, and I'm just finishing my first four-year term. I ran because I felt that my 34 years dedicated to public education as a school counselor and principal would be beneficial in serving on the board, and that it was time for me to give back to the community that I've been a part of my whole life. I graduated from WAPS, graduated three times from Winona State University, and have three degrees. I've raised two children in this community, immersed in the public school system, academics, music, and athletic program, and I've been married to Maynard Johnson for 44 years. Serving on the school board is an honor. My priorities have been and continue to be serving the students, staff, and the community in a way that enhances our public schools. I believe in our public schools, and I'm committed to continuing to make sound decisions based on data, facts, and considering all information before any vote is taken. My goals on the school board are to continue to study agenda items and be well-prepared to talk about them at the board table, stay current with the budgetary issues that face the district, move WAPS forward with a progressive and ambitious collaborative attitude, and I believe that this is a really important choice for our families to make, to continue to provide rigorous and meaningful curriculum at all levels, making sure that all students have equal access, and to follow our recently developed and agreed-to strategic plan in the district, and to continue to develop relationships with our teachers, administrators, the staff, and the people of the community. So I would appreciate your vote on November 8, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Carl Sonneman, an at-large candidate.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Carl Sonneman.
I checked to make sure your mic is on. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Carl Sonneman. Please let me begin with a little background of myself. I was born in Winona. I attended Madison School and Central Junior High School, and I graduated from Winona High School. I went to Northwestern University, and then to George Washington University Law School. I practiced law with the Minnesota Attorney General's Office, and now for the past 32 years, I have been in private practice here in Winona. I am married, and I have three children who are graduates of Winona High School. I am running because I believe that the district is in a better position today than it was four years ago when I joined the school board. I want to sustain that improvement. Recently, the board has faced difficult times. COVID greatly impacted students' learning and has worn out our staff. I believe that Winona is in better shape, both financially and educationally, than many places across the country. But we have much to do, both to maintain our position and to improve upon it. The board wants to carry out significant facility improvements. It has proposed a creative, environmentally sound, and cost-effective solution to improve air quality in two elementary school buildings. It is looking beyond that project to other buildings to keep facilities in sound condition for the long term. Solving these problems at the same time will require the board's full attention, because there are no easy solutions. To keep going, we need to spend public dollars wisely and continue to attract and retain outstanding teachers. We need to support our teachers in order to give our students the opportunities they deserve to achieve a great future. I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, I will read a statement from Tori Moore, who is the Winona Area Public Schools at-large candidate, and this is a statement withdrawal of candidacy. And can you please time me for two minutes? Regarding the upcoming at-large school board election, while I am on the ballot for this fall's at-large board election, I do not intend to run a campaign and do not wish to be elected at this time. When I initially filed to run for the at-large school board position, I had looked at my schedule for the upcoming seasons, and at that time had the time and flexibility to be able to commit to attend board meetings and spend time learning and researching the issues and concerns that affect our local district. Since then, there have been some substantial changes in the industry within which I'm employed, and with those changes came the realization that my travel and work commitments would significantly impact not only the amount of time that I would be able to spend on board business, but also the ability to attend the majority of school board meetings in person or remotely. Upon this realization, I looked into withdrawing from the race, but the time for that had long since passed. Great towns deserve great schools and dedicated people working to make those schools better. At this time, that dedication is something I can wholly offer to the district. I do feel that the district has made some large improvements and continues to get better in serving both our students and the community. Thank you. At this time, and thank you, candidates, for your opening statements. And now we're ready for our first audience question. And our first question will start with you, Carl Sonneman, at-large candidate, and you'll start with a question, and it is, if elected, what is your number-one priority for 2023?
I think the number-one priority we have is to continue this process of recovering from COVID. We have a lot to do with using the funds that are available. We have a number of COVID relief funds that we've received. It gives us the opportunity to address the, if you will, the fallback on education progress that happened during COVID. And we are doing our best to do so. We have extra effort, extra time, and extra staff working on it. And that, above all else, is where I think we have to go. There are many other issues that will come before the board, some of which I alluded to in my opening statement, but getting the students back to where they need to be is the number one.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Marilla Cunningham, at-large candidate.
As for a number-one priority, I don't think priorities are mutually exclusive, so I think there are multiple priorities, but they can be encompassed under one priority, so I'll do that for now. I would say supporting students, families, and teachers, that's very broad. So when I say supporting students, families, and teachers, I mean in the areas of curriculum instruction, providing teachers and other educators, staff, educational assistance with the curricula that they need, and with the support that they need to implement with fidelity of the curriculum. Supporting students in terms of their mental health and social-emotional well-being, that would apply to teachers as well, and making sure that we're engaging families and community members, whether they have students in the WAPS school district or not.
Thank you. Next will be Nancy Denzer for at-large candidate.
Thank you. I agree priorities are really all-encompassing, but for me, the physical and emotional safety of our students, staff, and all of the people who enter the doors at our schools is really the most important thing that we need to do. We are catching up in curriculum. We're giving our students additional supports because we've had a generous amount of money that has been given to us by government funding. And to me, it's keeping a good eye on that money and making sure that we're spending it wisely and helping our students improve not only where their academics are, but how their mental health is. And that does include all of our staff. It has been a difficult couple of years for everyone in our district, and I feel like our staff are well-equipped to deal with it. We've done a lot of improvements. We've made a lot of really good decisions as a board, and I feel like as we keep moving forward with the trajectory that we have outlined, that we have all the tools that we need, and now we just need time, and we need to have a lot of people helping us.
Thank you. Next would be Ted Hazelton, District One.
Oh, it's on. There's a lot of topics that could fall into my top priority. However, my top priority is to restore public trust, accountability, credibility, and transparency to our school district. It's improving, but it's got a long way to go. Without public trust, it affects many things, everything from employee morale to passage of future referendums, and how the public feels that we're running the schools in general. So that's my primary focus, is to restore the public trust, credibility, accountability, and transparency in our district, show the public that we're following through, make sound decisions both economically and educationally, and that's where my top priority is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Michael Hanrady, District Two.
Thank you. There are a lot of number-one priorities we could be talking about tonight. The one that I have already mentioned in my opening statement is educational equity, but this allows me an opportunity to explain what I mean by that. First, it's the statement that we believe that all kids are able to learn and have the opportunity to learn at Winona Area Public Schools. That's in our strategic plan, but not all kids learn the same. And part of the challenge in our modern schools is making sure that we find those appropriate supports for those kids that need different supports. Fortunately, at Winona Area Public Schools, we have a lot of different strategies to make that happen. The one that I'd like to talk about is social-emotional learning right now. We are prioritizing that through our strategic plan and making sure that kids are learning, especially through the COVID recovery, to take steps to improve just the mental health crisis that we're receiving right now.
Thank you. And Pete Watkins, District One.
My top priority will be to get up to speed, so to speak, in terms of the referendum or the proposed referendum. I know a lot about it as a community member, a taxpayer, what I read in the papers, but I know there's a lot more data and a lot more decisions that have been made, you know, kind of behind the scenes, that any new board member will have to learn. And with that referendum, that touches everybody in our community, not just current families, not just current students. And there'll be conversations in aisle seven at IV or at the gas pump at QuickTrip, people asking, hey, do you support this? So as a school board member, to be able to speak well to the referendum, the first thing I want to learn is, from the perspective of WAPS, why we're doing this, what makes sense, and how we can make sure it's the right thing to do.
Thank you. And we will start with you, Pete, for the next question. Each time a tragic school shooting occurs in our country, there are calls for increased safety measures in schools. What actions would you support to be taken by the school board to increase safety in our schools?
Thank you. That's a very important question. When the school district made the choice to remove the safety officers from the high school, I had two kids in the school at the time, and I didn't support that decision. I understand very much that there was friction between groups of students and the individuals in that role, and that needs to be dealt with at a personnel level, and you need to change the way people work. You don't just remove the safety mechanism just to remove it. The way I would explain it is, in a car, if your seatbelt doesn't fit right, you try to fix the way the seatbelt fits. You don't just stop wearing it. So I think it is imperative that our school district protects all of our students, all of our staff. I said at the beginning that teachers and students both need the tools to teach and the freedom to learn. That includes feeling safe in their schools. And so that is something that is important to me as a school board member, and I hope we revisit it as a board come this January. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Ted Hazelton from District One.
Well, Mr. Watkins highlighted a few of the points that I would have made. I think that was a mistake in the relation we had with the officer in the school. I would like to see that reinstated if elected. Also, our school district has done some good things in making our schools safe. In fact, there was a grant for $350,000 that provided a secure vestibule entry at WK. We also have secure entrances at all other WAPS buildings as well. I believe there's other things we can do to improve. And it also falls back on, as Mr. Hanrady said, social, emotional, and well-being. We need to provide social-- Time's up.
All right. Thank you. Carl Sonneman, at-large?
First of all, I want to correct the idea that we removed safety officers from the school. We have several safety officers in the school buildings at present, full-time one at the high school, and several on rotation between the other schools, and including rotating into the high school as needed. What we did do is end a contract with Winona Police to have a single uniform police officer in a building. One person cannot be everywhere at all times. And I believe that we are better situated today to address issues by having multiple persons in the buildings. Winona isn't that large a community. There are police squads around town. They are within less than a minute of virtually every school building we have, and the discussions continue with the police department and the sheriff's department, how safety can be maintained in this district. They are not excluded. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Michael Hanrady, District Two.
Thank you. Of course, violence in our schools is something that's of vital importance in addressing. There's two different ways that I look at it. First is building security, and the second is the behavioral interventions. I'll start with the building security. As been mentioned, that we have secure vestibules at all of our schools. Those are building upgrades that we had made over the past couple of years. Getting into our schools are going to be difficult unless you have a reason to be there. But then, part of the behavioral aspects is something that we have strategies to address. I'll mention PBIS, which is Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports. That is a way to, at a young age, we have it in our elementary schools and our middle school, to really reward those positive behaviors instead of always give consequences to the negative behaviors. And I'll just add my opinion on the officers that are in the buildings. I would not support the reinstatement of police officers in our schools. I believe that taking that approach is using a sledgehammer instead of a scalpel.
Thank you. Next, Marilla Cunningham, at-large?
So I think relationship building is the number-one priority in terms of ensuring safety or working towards safety of our kids, of our teachers, staff, administrators. A lot of the violence, and that might be a strong word, but that has occurred in the school district over the past few years, occurs because kids don't feel connected, either to other students or to staff. to other students or to staff or to the district. So I think building relationships, which I referred to earlier, is really important. Making sure that kids feel connected and feel a sense of belonging and feel valued can help to stem the violence that we've seen in recent years. I think also practicing and implementing with fidelity restorative justice. There have been trainings here and there, off and on, with the right groups of people, with the wrong groups of people, over the past few years. And I think restorative justice needs to be practiced with fidelity and that the district needs to assess its effectiveness, and we need to hold ourselves accountable for ensuring the safety of all students.
Thank you. And Nancy Denzer, at-large.
Thank you. Every time there's a tragedy in any school district, anywhere, any place really, it's always heart-wrenching to see what happens and to, you know, just be aware that our students are really vulnerable, as are our staff and our buildings. And our buildings have been secure. We have done a lot of work to not only have the vestibules secured at every entrance, but we've also done the work that has allowed for a new badge system so that you don't just get into the building. You have to have a reason to be there, and you have to sign in, and there's things that we have to do. But the emotional and physical safety of our students is really important. The safety officers that we have do a really great job of building relationships with our students. And I wouldn't be opposed to addressing having security officers. I think we have to be open-minded and readdress things if they come up in the future.
Thank you. Our next question, and we'll start with you, Nancy, for this one. What strategies would you employ to recruit and retain teachers in critical areas, particularly special education?
That's a great question. I can tell you right now that we are fully staffed, and we know that we're also in a district that not all districts can say that. We have, our last licensed person was hired a few weeks ago, so we feel really good about where our staffing is at. And our recruiting is done through our human resources department. They work with the different colleges and universities in every area. We do a lot of talking among ourselves and trying to recruit new students. I myself go to, I talk with students at Winona State. I've been in Dr. Scholl's class every single semester, talking with students, encouraging them to consider Winona as their choice. And I think we just need to keep really selling our school because it's a great place to be.
Thank you. Next, Michael.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Certainly. What strategies would you employ to recruit and retain teachers in critical areas, particularly special education?
So, thank you. When we're looking at staffing, of course, all of our areas that we have are important. But special education is a, can be a difficult area to meet the needs of all of our learners. My background, like I said in my opening statement, is I work at the Adult Advocacy Program at Catholic Charities where we support vulnerable adults. Before they're vulnerable adults, typically, they are kids that go through our special education system. I think one point that we could do is recognize just the importance of the work. And it is hard, but we don't get into that field necessarily for the money or because it's hard, but because it's special to us, and it's, we've been impacted by those students, by those people that we help. I think by just getting that story out there, it can help. Of course, also, it means attracting different diverse populations to teach, and we have strategies on that, and I look forward to seeing how those strategies play out.
Thank you. Carl Sonneman, Carl?
Thank you. I think much of what I've heard is both what I would support and what I know we are working hard at using in the schools. I think having Winona State University here and St. Mary's University provide us with resources and frankly, a pool to draw from that has, have been very helpful. I think the biggest problem in any enterprise of keeping your staff is providing them with the support that they need. If we speak specifically of the special education area, you have to recognize how emotionally draining a lot of that work can be at times. I think the people who go into it gain great satisfaction from it, but that doesn't mean that you spend, every day you leave fully, fully charged again. And I think we can, we have to be conscious of that.
Thank you. Ted?
I fully support our special education teachers. I speak from personal experiences. My younger son was, had mild autism spectrum, and he had an IEP and was in special ed. And he thrived. The way to retain these high-quality teachers is to help them become better teachers, support them both emotionally and with a reasonable contract for them to teach. Also, recruiting more teachers from Winona State and St. Mary's, as mentioned earlier. Winona, here's a little secret. Winona Public Schools has some of the best special ed services in the state of Minnesota. And that's something we need to honor. Time's up.
Thank you. Pete?
I almost feel guilty asking this question, being married to a special education teacher for 25 years. I feel like I have a little bit of advantage perhaps. But the number one thing, and it's really three things, is listen, and listen, and listen. Because special education teachers will tell you exactly what they need and, more importantly, what their students need. And I think, and this is true with any teacher, if you respect the work that they do and you acknowledge that they're in that field to help people, and it's not about the paycheck, it's certainly not about the glory, but if you listen to your special education teachers, they will tell you what they need to make their students' life the best it can be. And if you don't listen to them, they'll go somewhere else because there is huge need in our state. And a special education teacher who's licensed right now could walk into any district and just about and get a job. So I think that piece of respecting the work that our special educators do is very, very important. And also recognize the market opportunity. As a public school district, we are and can be the best special education resource compared to the private schools and online schools and so forth. So investing in that market opportunity is also very important. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Marilla?
I'll just piggyback on what Pete said about listening to the special education teachers, making sure that we're not only supporting the special education teachers and coordinators in the district, but making sure that they feel safe in the positions that they have, that they feel supported. What the special education teachers share with their families, with the communities, goes a long way. That word of mouth will have a positive impact if they're experiencing positive things in the school district. If they're not, it's problematic. I would also say, make sure that WAPS and Winona are appealing to people. I moved here from a different location to take a job here, and I've spoken with many other people who have moved to Winona. They look at the school district. Let's make sure we have strong academics. Let's make sure we have strong arts and that we have after-school programming that meets the needs of kids. Let's not hire a PR firm to say how great the district is. Let's show people how great the district is by being great. Recruit in multiple arenas and locations. Colleges and universities have already been mentioned. Think of other places. Think outside of the box. And grow your own. Start an F Future Teachers of America Club in the middle schools and high schools.
Thank you. And Marilla, we'll start with you for the next question.
Sure.
Currently, there are unprecedented attacks on transgender youth in America, from bans against trans youth in sports to denying trans-affirmative healthcare. What will you do to protect LGBTQIA+ students from harm?
In order to protect LGBTQIA+ students from harm, I think it's important that we are as up-to-date as we can be on all of the issues. As a school board and as a school district, we're not necessarily the experts in all areas. So going to, for example, the Minnesota Department of Education, they have a robust website with many different links to provide support for school districts from the administrative level to the level of teachers to parents and families. So utilizing the resources not only within the Minnesota Department of Education, but in organizations like GLSEN, also at St. Mary's University and the University of Minnesota, sorry, the University of Minnesota, sure, but also WSU. There are groups and organizations that support LGBTQIA+ communities and also those who are advocates. And as teachers and educators and school board members, we have to be advocates for all of the students we serve.
Thank you. Next, Nancy.
I agree with a lot of what Marilla said. Professional development in our district is really important, and I think the more that we can be not only up-to-date on our own information and current as school board members, we can never learn too much about any particular group of people. And in our work right now, I think we are trying really hard to be not only current, but also provide our staff with all the updated information that they can possibly have and publicly support every single group. It's important to me as a school board member that I'm informed, but I'm also supportive and an advocate for every single group of persons that is in our buildings and that we listen to our students because they're telling us what they need. It's important, again, as a school board member, we do have a student school board. We have two student school board members on our board, and they tell us what we need to know.
Thank you. Pete?
Thank you, and this is an important question. I serve currently on a diversity, equity, and inclusion committee through my employment at Winona State, and I know that's been, for me personally, very valuable, to learn about the world through the eyes of other people. You know, we all know what the world looks like from ourselves, but you really have to push yourself to learn about other folks from other backgrounds and see, try to see the world through their lens. And so I think, understand that we have to value all learners at Winona area public schools. And as has already been mentioned, staff training is a huge part of that and making sure that we have the resources to help our teachers, our staff, our safety officers, everybody in the school, that they're all willing to learn that. And if they're not, maybe Winona's not a great fit for them as an employee because our employees need to value all learners and our school board needs to value all learners. We set the tone at the top, and I think that's something I would take as a board member, very, very important to do.
Thank you. Ted?
If you were to look at the mission statement at the Winona area public schools, the motto is welcoming all learners. That statement right there speaks volumes. I agree with what's been said with my other fellow candidates as far as getting resources to our building administrators and our teachers and our parents. We also need to be more cognizant of what the needs and concerns are out there. As a school board member, I would want to listen to what parents and the kids in our district have to say on this topic. I'm not an expert in this area, nor do I profess to be. But at the same time, I don't believe that we need to have kids being ostracized and picked on and bullied because of who they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Carl?
I think the most significant statement I've heard is valuing all learners, or I think as another candidate said, welcoming all learners, because that recognizes what we are trying to do here. When I think of this, this, and it keeps coming up as described as an issue, I think it's important to start with the basic premise, that these children are as much part of the fabric of our community, they are as much part of the families in our community, they are the children of, in our families, they are the children of our neighbors' families. And why we, why we single them out or think they're different in any way than many of the other children have differences too. And we need to recognize that if there is bullying, there is discrimination, that is simply not acceptable. And we need to move based upon the fact that, that these children are part of us.
Thank you. And Michael?
Thank you. I'm going to talk about some practical approaches that I've helped advocate for when we're looking at our diverse communities in our student body. So I'm on the Board Operations Committee, which is basically our policy committee to review policy. Part of the policy committee was to help the newly-formed Board Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Committee, how to focus their work. And how we felt best to do that was by asking them to start doing an equity policy and making sure that we had set right in policy what we expect to protect all kids, including in our LGBTQ+ community. The Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Committee has been doing that work great, and I just saw the first draft copy that's going to be going to the Board Operations Committee. We still have work to do. We also need community support with that as well, and we're getting that through the Board Operations Committee. So that's just one practical approach that I have taken on that topic.
Thank you. And Michael, we'll start with you for the next question. What strategies would you consider to attract families to Winona area public schools?
Yes. So it had been mentioned today, but I, by not using a PR group, so far that hasn't been voted on. But I do think it's really important to have assistance in spreading the good news of our story about what's happening at Winona area public schools. We do have an outstanding communications coordinator that has been having real evidence-based strategies on how to promote the school district, uses great metrics when it comes to social media use, but also has a lot of creative and clever ways to promote our district. The other way that we attract families are through our programming. People are impressed by some of the programs that we'll, that we offer. Our music program is second to none, and I'll just talk about our RIOS program, which is our Spanish immersion program, really keeps people in our district. And we need to do everything we can to not only support those, but improve them when needed.
Time. Next, we'll go to Carl.
I think the major thing we can do to bring more students into our district is programming. We are the largest school system in the area. That gives us the flexibility to offer greater programming. We need to be cognizant of making it the highest-quality programming that is offered in the area as well. And what we need to do is make sure it's, it's well-known out there. But I think the place to start is knowing that we have the programming and getting the word out there, that that is. We need to frankly triumph our students' successes, including those who've graduated and what they've gone on to do, because I daily hear about great success from graduates from Winona High School.
Thank you. Marilla?
Some of the strategies, I think I briefly touched upon this, but, you know, be the best. Be the best that we can be, not be okay with mediocrity, not that anybody is okay with mediocrity, but raise the level, raise the bar. So improving our academic programs, our offerings, and not only improving the offerings, but improving the way we prepare kids from K or birth, birth K1 to, improving the way we prepare them to be successful in those academically rigorous courses. Also partnering with community members. Again, I can't say it enough that Winona is a resource-rich community. People sitting in here are experts in one field or another. What are those experts? Is the district tapping, what are those areas of expertise, and is the district tapping into them? Whether you're a carpenter or a dancer or a writer, are we tapping into your areas of expertise in order to help build, build relationships, positive relationships with the community and the school district?
Thank you. Nancy?
Some of the strategies that I think are really important for us to keep doing, we do have an excellent communications director, and he's looking all the time for stories. And I think we have to tell our own story. Not only tell it to everyone we meet along the way, but also encourage people to consider us. And that means that, you know, we are the first look at the school when people are wondering about us, and the school board sets the tone. So I think our presence is really important. But we also have a lot of really great things to talk about, strategies that are being used in our FFA program, which is, you know... used in our FFA program, which is, you know, not only state-acknowledged, but well-recognized around here. Our nursing assistance program that we get a lot of accolades for, and our students tell a lot of stories. So I think we've already done a lot of work. We need to continue singing our own song.
Thank you. Pete?
I do feel in a way it's a story of our family, because we moved here about a decade ago, and we had choices, and we chose Winona Area Public Schools. And as other folks have said, I think, tell the, tell the story of our success by succeeding, not just in the the big-ticket items, everyone reads about sports, you hear about certain things, but there are so many great stories behind the scenes. And the more we tell that story, the better we'll attract and retain students and their families. I think of a student that I know pretty well that had a small engines class, an AP site class, and the best music class they ever had in the same semester. When you have that kind of academic breadth and depth to what you do, you just need to make sure that that story is out there and people are aware of it. I really applaud the current board, things like REACH, things like RIOS have got a long way to helping tell that story. The last thing I would throw out there is, don't forget about our early childhood program. If you really want to attract and retain students, get them as young as you can and show the quality of your early childhood programs. And we all know how big an asset that would be in a community like ours with a lot of two-parent working households that are looking for that opportunity. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Ted?
I guess, I guess I would concur with everything that's been said already. And we need to do a good job of promoting ourselves. There's nothing wrong with patting yourself on the back and saying, look, we have, we can offer this, or we can offer that. It's all about public knowledge and success in life. And going, and you want to start earlier, the better. Winona has a wonderful ECFE program. We have wonderful preschools. We have top-notch teachers. We have state-acclaimed programming that's been mentioned as well. I would just concur with everything that's been said, and we need to promote ourselves, promote ourselves, and promote ourselves some more. Because there are other educational choices that are out there, we need to stand above the crowd. Thank you.
Thank you. I wish I could ask more questions, but our time is up. But we do have time now to do our closing responses, and so we will start with Ted. You will be the first one. So you have one minute.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the Women's League of Voters and all the cosponsors for bringing us here tonight. Thank you for the questions and for the audience participation. I'm Ted Hazelton. I'm running for first district seat. I have past experience being on the school board. I'm active in our community. I've been involved with our, I've been involved with various entities in Winona. I've served on just various district committees and task forces in the past. I'm a graduate of Winona High. My kids went to, went to and currently go to schools in Winona. My heart is in the public schools, and so are my kids. I want to do what's best for our students, make and bring back more public trust, and hopefully that equates to better morale and better community relations. And the best days of, in Winona Public Schools are yet to come. That's my, that's my spot.
Thank you. And next, also running for District One, Pete Watkins. Your closing statement?
Well, again, thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting our forum tonight. And I think it's important to remember, the most important thing school boards do is make decisions. Our group of seven people selected from the community will decide on things ranging from the price of lunch at Jefferson Elementary to major decisions like referendums, hiring of key positions, and a lot of the things that we've talked about here today. I ask you to research Ted, and I ask you to research me, and ask yourself, who will make better decisions on behalf of our community? As I said before, I believe our teachers need the tools to teach. I believe our children deserve the freedom to learn, and I believe that our families, our communities, our taxpayers deserve a transparent and pragmatic school system. I'm here for today's students and tomorrow's students. I'm here because I'm an educator, a parent, a taxpayer, and a homeowner. I'm here most of all because I believe the best years of Winona Area Public Schools will be the next 20 years. Thank you for the opportunity to earn your vote tonight.
Thank you. Michael Hanretti for District Two.
Yes, thank you. I thank to the League of Women Voters for this opportunity. In my opening statement, I had mentioned that I first ran four years ago to be a new voice. Running for elected office can be scary, but it's also really fun, and learning about the community and the school district is an amazing opportunity. What I didn't surprise is just how much I love serving on the school board of the of the district. The celebrations that we have at the end of the year to celebrate our FFA, our Miller mentoring program, our National Honor Society, always makes the hard work throughout the year worth it. One thing that I'm running on right now is just keep moving forward, forward through our building improvements, forward through our COVID recovery, and forward through supporting our students and staff, and I would appreciate your vote.
Thank you. And next will be our candidates for the At Large, which remember, there will be, you pick two which will be on the ballot, and starting first will be Morella Cunningham.
So again, I want to thank the League of Women Voters in the city of Winona for having us here. My understanding is that you can pick up to two. You can pick one or two. Just wanted to make sure I have the correct understanding.
You can pick up to two.
I've had one daughter graduate from WAPs. I have a son in WAPs. They've had very different experiences. One is academic, academically excels and a great athlete. The other is a pretty good athlete, I know he's not watching this, and hates school. He likes working with his hands. He likes being active. I want a district that can meet those two needs and many, many more needs that fall out of, out of, out of those two categories. I think that I, I, not I think, I want a district that can address and confront inadequacies. We know that we do great things in the district, and we want to continue doing those, but where we are out of compliance with state or federal laws, where we are not meeting students' needs, whether it's based in or rooted in language, or ability, or something else, let's face those. Let's not brush them under the rug or put them into the closet. We need to address those issues. I also think that it's important that a school dis, school board represents people with diverse lived experiences, so that they have certain items to bring to the table.
Nancy Denzer?
I'd also like to thank the League and everyone who is here, plus all of you sitting at the table. It is scary to run for any office, and once you're there, then you're there, and you have to make some decisions. And decisions that we make at the board table sometimes are complicated, and sometimes we have disagreements. But we also have created a board in the last four years that has come together in not only a collaborative way, but also a respectful way. And that was one of my goals as I got onto the school board, that I believe we have to be working together and treating each other with respect and honesty. I believe that the work that I have done over the last four years does demonstrate that, and I'm willing to work hard another four years. I believe mostly that I serve the students and staff of this district, and that I'm always looking out for their best interest, and my decisions are made with them in mind at the forefront every single time. Thank you. I would appreciate your vote.
Thank you. Carl?
I would like to thank the League of Women Voters, our other sponsors, our broadcasters, my fellow candidates, and the citizens living in District 861 for the opportunity to be heard tonight. Our democracy depends on the free and open discussion of issues affecting us as citizens. The League is to be commended for continuing this longstanding tradition of these forums. Public education is at a crossroads. For it to continue and prosper, it must change. It has, I have worked for the past four years to create necessary changes. We have a longstanding tradition of providing outstanding public education to the children of the Winona area. We must continue our work to maintain and expand upon the opportunities which public education affords our young people here. I hope you'll agree that I have served you well. If so, I hope you will support me and urge you to vote for Carl Sonneman for At Large School Board in November.
Thank you. We're at the end of our forum. We want to thank all the candidates who are here, who are running for office. We appreciate you doing that, and thank you for this informative event. We, the League of Women Voters would also like to thank all of our cosponsors, the Advocacy Center of Winona, AAUW Winona Branch, Engage Winona, Home and Community Options, Project Fine, Winona Occupational Rehabilitation Services, and Winona State University Department of Social Work. We'd also like to thank HBC for taping this educational forum. We would like to share that this is the final evening of the League of Women Voters' General Election 2022 Candidate Forums. Tonight's forum, in their entirety, will be made available to the public for viewing prior to the general election on the League of Women Voters Winona Facebook page within a few days. We want to thank all the public in attendance for the 2022 forums and our cable TV viewers. The 2022 League of Women Voters Winona Live Forums were all featured on government public access channels, HBC and Spectrum Charter. The forum videos, unedited, are all available on the League of Women Voters Winona Facebook page and also on the YouTube, LWV Winona. Just search the website for either, for either location. The dates were October 11th was Minnesota Legislative Senate and House Candidates, and October 18th, Winona County Public Officials and Winona County Board Candidates. We want to remind the public, if you see anything used by candidates for promotional or campaign, that the League of Women Voters does not endorse or authorize candidates to use our taped forums in any manner. Vote411.org. This is an important national website, and we know that most of our candidates have submitted information on this website. This website will, will provide information on candidates that are on your ballot in your precinct. Check it out. You can find information on registering to vote, check your ballot, and your candidates' answers to League of Women Voters' questions. That's on vote411.org. Remember that you also need information, if you need information on becoming a registered voter, you can call the Winona County Auditor Treasurer or Winona County City Clerk. Online registration is closed for the general election that ended on October 18th. But Minnesota does have registration at the polls. If you are not pre-registered to vote, you may register at the polls. You can check vote411.org for more information on voting and what you need to register at the polls. And note that you can vote by mail or in person at Winona County. It started September 23rd, and it will go through November 7th during normal business hours. The Winona County Auditor Treasurer's Office is open during regular business hours to obtain a vote-by-mail ballot or in-person early voting. Registered voters may request a mail-option ballot from the Minnesota Secretary of State's Office website. The process is simple and easy. Mailed ballots for the general election must be received by November 8th, Election Day, regardless of the postmark. If a voter is concerned about mail-in ballots arriving to the Winona County Auditor Treasurer's Office, it can be hand-delivered to the counter at Winona County Government Center on Washington Street between Second and Third Streets in downtown Winona. Ballots must be dropped off by 3:00 PM on the day of the general election on November 8th. Realize the polls are open until 8:00 PM, but if you want to drop off a ballot, it has to be there by 3:00 PM. Please vote. The general election is Tuesday, November 8, and the polls are open 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Thank you, and let's give a round of applause to our candidates for their participation. Thank you.
If you have any evaluation, make your evaluation.